All right, good morning, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order, ask everyone to please rise for our national anthem. Please be seated. All right, good morning, council. Item 1.0 is additions to the agenda. Any additions? Seeing none, take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Long? You weren't fixing your hair? Okay. All right, off to a roaring start. All in favor? That's carried, thanks. Item 3.0 is corrections or amendments to the November 2nd, 2016 regular meeting, council minutes. Any corrections or amendments? Seeing none, take a motion to adopt the November 2nd regular meeting, council minutes. Counselor Natto? All in favor? That is carried, thanks. Item 5.0 is delegations. 5.1, Staff Sergeant Callahouz, October statistics. Staff Sergeant, good morning. It's up for you. It's up for you. No?
Not that technologically advanced at this point.
Okay.
So, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
So, we're just gonna go through our fiscal comparison for October. You know, it's kinda late in the month for an October stat, but unfortunately, they didn't have any for the first council meeting this month, so... Just a few things to take note of. I like to kinda do the generalities on the first part, get into the specifics on the monthly comparisons. Our assault count this year, in total, we're at 69 incidents, which is quite a decrease from years previous. We've seen 20, probably, at 159, and then 13, 28, 24, 120, 25, 96, around 69 per month this year. So, it is dropping, which is good. Unfortunately, I think that that's also due to other factors outside of scope of this whole thing right now. So, unfortunately, on the other end, property crime is up. It's about 59 incidents last year to 93 this year, and theft of motor vehicle from 57 to 64, so slight increase there. And I'll get into the specifics of what we have here for this month. Theft under also has a $5,000, also seen rise from 219 incidents last year to 231 this year. Mischief is actually the only area of property crime that seems to have dropped from 219 to 163 for the year. So, I'm gonna flip over, and I'm gonna take us past the next two pages, just because I think it could be more succinctly of the historical, the errors of the four, the month crossover. Moving through the assault counts, we have 11 incidents this past October. Of those incidents, we had, there were three that were family bonds related, all of them related to charges. One of them unfortunately was an actual aggravated assault, fairly serious assault, it's not a trifling injury. The charge has been laid on that, and that victim is still recovering at this point, so I think that's kinda okay on the other end. So, that's some good things in that area. There was two incidents where charges were declined as a result of essential fights at the bar. You guys, as you know, at the bar, but do not get into one way or the other with it. There was another bar fight where there's unknown suspects. One had some drug-related connotations to it. Basically, it was a potential drug rip from a known drug dealer in town using bear straight on the person, so it's classified as assault. But the fact is that it's also linked with the whole lifestyle of people that live there as well. Two, the match is still under investigation. One was later found to be an unfounded incident, and so that scoring was changed after the fact. So, moving on to our property crime. Breaking enters, we had 10 incidents this past October. Of those, either of those are business-related, two residential. With the residential ones, we had one where there's a snowplow that was taken from a shed, another one where there's some squatters that were actually at a abandoned residence in town, so that was substantial improvement of that property. With regards to the business-related stuff, again, we're seeing a lot of smashing grabs, like your local liquor stores, the industrial-related businesses that are getting hit for tools or things of that nature. So, I have had opportunity to be involved with some enhanced patrol these past few months. I just wanna let you know that we actually have, from last month, where we had 3 proactive patrols, and that would be in September and October, we had, hopefully doubled up to 71, in order to help try and combat the problem. Again, doing vehicle stops, checking who's out late at night, that type of thing, so we're trying to increase our visibility to suppress that. Tickets, we only had eight this last month. We did manage to get two impaired, both in town, and we had three 24-hour suspensions. With regards to the motor vehicle theft, there's three incidents this past month. One of them was a vehicle that was stolen from the Tim Hortons. That vehicle was recovered. Well, actually, all three incidents of vehicles were recovered, but the Tim Hortons one specific, the shotgun was found missing on that vehicle, so it's a bit of a concern. We're still trying to follow up, it's a real one. Another one was stolen from a residential driveway, and one was stolen from a local hotel. That vehicle was since recovered in Forec Mountain House. So, with regards to theft under $5,000, this can cover everything from theft from a motor vehicle, we've seen it through the trouble issue, when people wander around, checking vehicles, see if they're unlocked, pillaging vehicles, so again, stressing, lock your vehicles, make sure they're inside. We do have one subject charged for breaking into vehicles, stealing, and there is a bunch of stolen business on that person. This person is well-known for this attachment, tends to be someone who wanders a great deal, and is known for this type of crimes, so he's currently, as far as I know, he's in Lehman, so he's off the streets, but is someone who consistently does his type of procedures, trying to work with, trying to figure out how we can best deal with him in such a way as to hopefully try to suppress that. So, that one was charged. Of those 20 incidents, 13 of those were thefts from motor vehicles, where again, the subject is unknown, and those remain unsolved. Three of the incidents with regards to heavy theft, so there was a theft of a jacket at the library, there's a theft of a backpack or someone else, and again, liquor store, bottle of liquor was taken. And then there's a number that are still under investigation. Last page, again, I'd like to kinda touch up to the last little victory of what's clear seen in issues. Again, these are deviations from the normal. From the normal, we tend to see quite a bit, and as you can see, it's fairly clear that our business and residential breaking enters are up from 2015 to '31 to '56, and then residential from '25. All said and done, we wanted to put them all together, 59 last year, now 93, so that's a significant increase. Again, I think it has to do a lot with where we're at in our economy, where we're at with people getting desperate and trying to do these types of things. And we do see our commonplace people getting involved more regularly, because again, money's not cool as much, so they're turning to property crime or build that need, so... And again, the last one is the law of speeding violation. Again, that's just to make sure that we're getting the after-replition of what we're looking at in that area, and so that's why there's a significant increase in that area. But with that, all the questions.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bossert.
Good morning, Staff Sergeant, thank you for coming in. I had a look over this last night, and under common police activities for the year up to October 31st, there were 30 missing people reports, missing persons reports, up from five this time last year. Can you attribute that to any particular cause? It just seems like, did a whole group of people go missing at some point on the river?
No, basically, what that is, is that there is a number of youths who like to run away for a time being, and these are multiple entries of one or two different people. We used to have a different scoring system where it could be, there's one where it's personally reported missing, and there's another with requests to locate. So, sometimes we were capturing the proper score, or what it really actually was, and so now, we're training that score into the proper codes, while you see that significant injuries. So, again, no, there's not people disappearing from the area, it's just unfortunate, it's more of a scoring issue, again, and trying to rectify some issues that were being, not exactly representative, correct?
Anything further, Counselor Frederiksen?
Staff Sergeant, I'm wondering if you're able to have any comments regarding the temporary structures that are set up behind our recycling depot?
Oh, and camping.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I had asked, I've been getting questions about it, and I've asked our administration. I'm not sure whose jurisdiction it is, whose issue it is to look after and take care of, but also, I'm just wondering as well, if you can give any context to the individuals at all that are staying there?
Context, well, I think the thing there is that these are a, again, a known group of people who complicate their, and again, I know that speaking with Pam Ball, the last night, I'm a traffic advisory, and she mentioned how that's a bit of an issue, so it was one of the things on my plate to kinda tackle a little bit more closely, to see what we have for that. So, I don't have a distinct answer for you right now, but I have a wherewithal, and we're gonna do a little bit more closely.
Counselor Frederiksen?
And just to what Counselor Bossert had said a couple council meetings ago, would we be then in the process of that, ensuring that these individuals get linked up with some of the resources that we have in the community, whether it's...
Whether it's like the...
Yeah.
Or whether it's some...
A place to stay, or, yeah.
Yeah, and again, that would be, those would be the things that, I'm trying to remember the, her most important example.
Emily.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Yeah, and trying to link them up to hurry up. I think one of the things is that that would be an ideal situation, of course. Sometimes, and it's been my experience, sometimes people really, you know, situations tend to not want to go to these establishments or these different places, and so it does take some convincing... The thing is though, that, yeah, for camping out in that area, certainly, it's not something that we wanna see, and it creates some safety concerns, obviously, for our local residences as well, so it's an active issue.
Is there anything further? Counselor Natto?
Good morning. I'm just wondering, as Christmas parties start acting up, or not acting up, gearing up, probably a little bit of both, I'm just wondering, are you gonna be focusing on drinking and driving campaign as well, again?
That's a good point. Our upcoming month, obviously, in December, will be focus on check stops and impaired driving. Obviously, we don't want anyone drinking and driving in the season or any time, really, but I do wanna watch you on the, you know, we do have plans in place for running check stops through the community, and it's, you're gonna see us up there at 9:00, pulling over vehicles, and that's not fair stuff, you see, yeah, that there is plans to ramp up for the holidays.
Anything further? All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, Travis. I mean, kind of everyone, everything.
Okay, you too. Item 5.2, from Warehouser, we have Bob Winship, who's going to talk to us about how many timberlands?
Forests.
Forests.
I'm Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks very much for your opportunity. I'm gonna go through the slide back presentation very fast, about 20 slides, and my time slot, squeeze it in there, so don't talk too fast, but apologies in advance, and what we'll do is hopefully have some time for questions afterwards, so... So, the topic is forest and forest management, representing the very most of the company, and it's just simply, Sheriff of Council, something that's going on right now, if you're not aware of it, it does impact management natural resources that the community depends on, recreation, environmental services, and of course, the economy. My co-presenter over there, I'm gonna pass, I'll just move right quickly. Just to remind you, we live next to the Green Zone, it's almost two-thirds of the province is dedicated to growing trees. In fact, the forest rest of the Great Valley, at one time, were designated for growing trees by the federal government before we were province, that's how important it is to let me forget that, it's all birds. Managed by two different departments. Again, as you know now, all decisions that goes on in public lands, in like Greensland, down through land and framework, very powerful legislation, the Alberta Stewardship Act, it's unique in Canada. If you're curious for the forest management, forests like we, it's in that blue area, we are a sub-regional plan, and by the way, for interest sake, I serve on regional advisory council for the most, it's got a regional plan upcoming, so if you ever have any questions after both that, I'm a person excited for that. Powerful piece of legislation, we'll read to the slide, but here's the key, what we set ourselves up for, it's unique in Canada, is at some point in time, we're gonna decide what is key or effects, and how much is too much in that forest area around our community. So, very significant event, again, unique in Canada, very forward, but we're careful what you're asking for. Underpart part of it is, we have a forest tenure as Warehouser, it's called the highest form of the tenure of forest management agreement. Again, we'll read that to you, but the key here, what makes us unique in Canada, is that the tenure, this will bring this delegates and resource management responsibilities to us, the tenure holder, on behalf of the government, so if you will, we put millions of dollars as a company in resource management evaluation beyond just normal business and getting timber in and for in our area. Unique in Canada, it's a great role in the sense that the company, stewardship, work in the other, between the world. And just if you're curious, that's the, around the region, there's a different forest management green areas, you can see ours supplying our facility in Green Valley, that's includes from Whiteford to like Mountain House, 10,000 square kilometers in size, and if you're curious about half of that area is what we actually manage for forest for our purposes, the other half is used for conservation, protection, and other many uses. Now, with respect to forest management, that topic today is what we're in the heat of right now, we do this whatever, ten year, and which kinda prompted us to come to town and share that with you, these are long-term plants, other like, unlike other resource sectors, we plant for 20-year plants, and we forecast different scenarios of resource development and forest growth over the period to 200 years. So, very long-term plants, if you ask us where we're gonna be next year, normally, next year, we'll tell you where we may be in 10 years from now. That's the little effort we put into it, which supports us in our opportunities. So, what we put into that investment is, we put a lot of money, we're looking at the landscape, and we're not, you know, where every tree is, or the type, forest stand, rusted pine, you name it, we've got it all mapped. We put a lot of effort as well, so if you're watching how forests grow, it's, again, it costs a lot of money, but it's no substitute for the time. We have been monitoring how fast the forest grows for about three years right now, and learning a number of interesting things. As part of our profession, our practice, of course, we often understand what really how that forest got here, and that trumps a lot, how we manage the forest, and of course, fires is a big factor, and another one, of course, is mountain pine beetle, and no, the people is not, cannot drink their forest area yet, it is a little bit, not significantly, I say yet. Just to remind everybody, as we do others, our forest resource around the Great Valley area has the most susceptible pine in the province. So, if the beetle does come here, it will go to town, on march, so we are concerned about that, and it could finish up the park, maybe it is coming through. We also threw a lot of evaluation on fish and wildlife resources, moving costs that we keep, again, millions of dollars in research and monitoring efforts for a variety of species, both endangered and endemic. We also have to work hard at understanding how we get along with the other resource uses out there, particularly on the gas sector, recreation, this ranchers, just a new couple, that goes along with what we do, and of course, we reforest everything we harvest, it's to regulated standards, we also have equal standards, because the faster the forest grows back, it allows us to harvest more today. Again, the harvest levels that we determine today, based on the principle, we cannot harvest anywhere in the forest that is capable of growing on a sustainable basis forever. So, we put a lot of effort in front of proof that point through good science and water change. At the end of it, again, as I say, we make those decisions on a manual basis, shareholders and stakeholders in the province, and where we harvest, it's based on a lot of criteria, whether it's forest value and protection, of course, toward our business, supplying our facility, or anything great about it. Now, part of that, again, is engaging a lot of the community and stakeholders who work, live in that forest, including our indigenous communities, and over time, what we do, start to compile a list of issues and concerns they have, and our response to them, from the perspectives that those use in the forest, those of regulator, and again, not everything is in regulation or policy, there's still a lot of things that province struggles with, with all the activity out there in public land, and ultimately, the perspective of resource managers and scientists who we've done as well. So, as I come to the point here, A is to let council know that this is going on right now, you have an opportunity, if you wanna get into the details or information of what's going on, in our forest management plan process, we'd be glad to send that to town in any fashion you wish, and again, through council or staff, we'll leave you with these three questions, type of thing, we're like you're here for you right now. Now's a good opportunity, of course, to look at things for long-term, and some strategies and tactics we can do to see the interest that you represent the town for, and integrate the new community for that matter. Just by the way, a word of, tomorrow night, we are having the open house for the town, so pass the work on, and I would pause there.
Very efficient, Bob, thanks so much, I appreciate it. Are there any questions, Counselor Frederiksen?
The third question about being kept informed, one of our industries is logging, and I would, I was just thinking, I would like to be kept informed on the status of the mountain pine beetle, just because of that being a real threat to our economy, if it does come through, and if it comes through in such a rate that it flattens our forest industry.
I have a question related to mountain pine beetle as well. I know the mayor of Hinton is, it is a top-of-mind issue for their community, and he's been trying over the last couple of years to engage the federal government more in, on this issue. Last I heard, not much success to date, but are you aware of any, any work in the planning by the federal government to try to address this, or resources being brought to bear?
Oh, great question, Mr. Mayor. With that, the council, just quickly do a bit of background, so again, back to the risk if you're in a tour area, if you're not aware, 70% of the wood supply from the Great Valley saw them all at this time. And again, we just happen to be in the middle of the province, behind a bunch of blocks, we didn't fly over in the 90s and 10 years ago. What the mayor's concerned is that what the federal government has seen is, well, the beetles done break in, in Alberta, and now they're worried about spreading to the rest of the American Eastern Canada. However, our particular area is still at risk, so the next level of federal engagement is in the national parks. The beetle, of course, is not distinguished between parks or our commercial forest, if you will, so it is in the national parks. There is some recent announcements coming out this year, trying to address the beetle in the national parks, however, what that means becomes the debate, if you will, is it enough, is it aggressive enough? And for those, we saw it this best way, after a fresh commute, and sure you won't, unless we're ravished by it, one mustn't negate us of what to do, which is really simple, you can't stop it, eat lunch before the beetle comes. And it sounds like a over-sophisticated term, but really what it says, if you're thinking of pesticide controls, attacking, you know, capturing those trees with beetles, and assuming we're in a slaughterhouse, and critically, if you're wondering why, the gods of disappointment, is because all of that old forest you see up the west is not natural, it's never, as long as we can tell from our science, going through that, given to our carbon source and everything, the forest has never been that old. We came along as Europeans, we stopped fires, we got old, warming climate, we set lunch for nature. So, this just has nothing to do with the rest of our election. Key to though, is the federal government funding the national parks, and beyond that, helping us, that would be it, because we can stop it here, we can stop it in the future prospect.
And as you say, the way to deal with it is, what did you say, eat lunch before it comes? So, that means...
That's what I was saying.
Cut trees, so harvest them, do it now, yeah, okay. It's, it strikes me that with the softwood lumber MOU being an issue, and I know Warehouser has its own perspective on the softwood lumber MOU, and it's because you're a multinational company, I understand that, so I'm not asking you to comment on the softwood lumber MOU, but, but it strikes me that that potentially exacerbates the problem if we're, if we're ramping up our harvesting of the forests, where are we gonna sell that if the Americans don't want, or want to attach tariffs to what we're exporting?
It's a good question, and again, just for the committee, trust you're aware, we've done put $24 million into the softwood facility here recently, is to do just that, not only competitive, but also to keep our production. The other key thing that's happened in the lifetime here, we've always traditionally shipped at least two-thirds of our product to the United States, we're down to a third now. The third is gone overseas, both of us in Western Canada, that's what the softwood lumber and the combination works to do. It's really important, of course, to find markets other than the United States, and I say that as an American company, for two purposes. With respect to the dispute, when we wrap it up, absolutely, you know, the best thing I can say, I can say, we have the warehouse, it's an agreement, and again, for folks, the softwood lumber bringing the food, and set aside from the, it's been a unique agreement, we've always, between the countries, we agree on that. Without that, it will be a battle of wars and trade sanctions, which will hurt our competitiveness here, quite right, Mr. Mayor, but again, the short answer is, find other markets, and of course, find those markets that do fit, and fellow experts predict they will, the council remains competitive, cost-effective.
Right. It's the same argument for the energy industry, find other markets. Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Bossert, and then Counselor Wheeler?
Good morning, Bob. I was able to attend the biocomposites roundtable last week, very informative afternoon. With our needing to clear the forest to prevent the beetles from moving east, we are having an influx of wood product as well as wood waste, and I'm just wondering what Warehouser's position is on agreements using your wood waste in the biocomposite sector, a new sector where wood waste... waste in the biocomposite sector, a new sector where wood waste is being used for all sorts of manufacturing areas. You have the fiber. I'm just wondering where that is in your, in your business and in our community?
Well, first off, two, two baskets of fiber, if you will, is that, you create the manufacturing process right here, so in short town, wherever you have a problem, we're actively looking for solutions to that. We're open to that, if you will. With respect to the wood fiber that's left behind in the process and the trees, of course, right now, you're right, we're finding very, so we would have nothing more than to have people like to play someone else. We've looked at a number of options for that, as much economic sector, unfortunately, economics just aren't there. With respect to rights, no, we're, if we're not in the business of utilization, we certainly would be more than going to supply it somewhere else.
Councilor Wheeler?
Good morning. My question is actually more on terms of your mapping and stuff. I was previously sitting on the Eagle Point's Blue Rapids Provincial Park Board and I know they're always talking about expansion, looking for space or recreational space, especially where we could have off-highway vehicles that are not close to where someone is living. There's ideal situations and I'm just wondering if you guys have ever spoken with them about potential opportunities you see, because only so much of the forest is able to be harvested for certain reasons. And if there's an area where, like, you're not using, it might be ideal, I'm just wondering if there's ever been a connection?
Good question. Yes, we do speak to the, both the provincial association, the local association, all clubs, including other clubs from other communities. I can't say it's just a growing issue, more and more use, more and more perceived momentum impacts of that. What I would offer is, way of the future is to work on a simple principle that we can no longer go everywhere, any time we want. However, there should be trails everywhere, integrated with forest managers, operations such as ourselves, including one of that sector. It's something we really need to do in Alberta, is, both of us using the public times, have the incentive to start working together, to share the land, to share those opportunities. We have a number of examples where we will build and put those trails in place. We can afford that opportunity for long-term time. But, again, the way we're going to rest of our, very, 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 practically, simply dress up and trace. Once you set up a good trail system across the landscape, integrate the ancient industrial market, market towards management, people will go there. The reverse is true, it's completely, you can't go, all we need to do is work on long-term time, that's the best way to do this. It's opposed to trying to isolate standalone pieces of public time just for exclusive uses, it's just for your.
Yeah, that'd be great, maybe we can connect somehow and work on that. Thanks.
All right. Anything further? Thanks so much, Bob. Thank you for your presentation. All right, moving on to five point three, we have a request for, a delegation request from Carolyn Lightcheck. Is she here?
Good morning, Carolyn. So, I understand that you wanted to have the opportunity to speak to council on this issue before we address the decision item, which is coming up shortly on the agenda. So, I'll give you the opportunity now.
I don't experience general support for it, never have, never will. I've never worked with individuals. Our powers have been cut, you know, I don't know, I don't know anything. I'm not aware of any of that. Nothing has ever been said to me to say otherwise, anything that did come, we have people's name, but we're in a mature and secondary, we're not that, this is a little. So, I'm not avoiding the adult access, but I'm not avoiding the adult. I'm aware of my own people's, and we're everything that I'm.
Who was your lawyer? Yeah, okay. And have you been in touch with her recently to, to determine or to, to have her, I know we sent a letter as well, but when a lawyer acts on behalf of somebody purchasing a mobile home or any property, they send a notice as part of their normal protocol, they send a notice to the municipality advising them of the change of ownership. That, that is the only way that a municipality, and Drayton Valley's not unique here, it's every municipality, that's the only way we will know of the change of ownership. Yeah, except that there is no record of that having been received in Drayton Valley.
There is, Rita, only since that you guys haven't even received it. I mean, bought it, it's been held in the chest.
Can administration help me out here?
I did provide the town office of the tax information, that it was sent and received. And you guys did call me back and say, yes, we have received it. Now, apparently, the sellers.
Are you saying that somebody from, sorry to interrupt, are you saying that somebody from the town office contacted you to say, yes, we received the notification in 2011?
No, in 2007, when we, when my grandfather and my uncle bought the property in 2007. It was a sweet question. Not neither, him nor I ever loved it, not once. And the lawyer called me back and said that it was because the seller's lawyer, um, terrible appointment, a month or half, a month and a half after we had our papers, they felt very bitter, and the other didn't. But that's not my fault.
Okay, I, I'm afraid I can't go back to 2007. The information in our agenda package goes back to, I believe it's 2012, am I correct in that? And, and that's the only period of time that we are, that we are requesting unpaid taxes and penalties for. What happened before that, I don't know, but I gather you took.
Right, but I'm saying that how she did this mission, maybe during the property in first place, I don't know. We were known since 2007, that I paid that. It doesn't matter on property in first place, not much ever to a later. I'm just, and you're.
Now, let's back up a second. In 2012, you utilized the services of a lawyer to purchase the mobile home, is that correct? Or 2011?
So, he purchased the mobile home under my, I think, which is my grandfather's.
Okay, and then it sold to you in February of 2011?
Right.
Okay, so in 2011, you became the sole owner of the mobile home, correct? Okay. It is, and at that time, is that when you engaged the services of a lawyer?
In 2007.
In 2007. Can administration help us out here? When, if any, if ever, when did the town receive a notification from a solicitor that somebody owns this mobile home? When was the last time we received something like this?
2007.
So, in 2007, we received a notice. Are you saying that from 2007 to 2012, you never received a tax notice?
I had not received a tax.
No, Modesta Enterprises never received a tax notice?
Because that's not what I'm trying to say.
Or is it that it was never sent to this address?
No, we never received one.
Okay.
And that's what I'm trying to say, was I, having myself, or my grandfather's, I would have known that I had.
Okay, I'm going to ask, okay. Sorry, I keep kind of going back and forth and I apologize for the interruptions here. So, a question for administration, do we have records of having issued tax notices prior to 2012? Yes? And, at least going back as far as 2007?
Yeah, we send them every year and she's, there wasn't any, there wasn't a lawyer. So, we did this wish to be on sale, but they were paying up until they were purchasing property, but they had their, they were paid up to make it very long.
Okay, so if they were paid up, somebody must have been receiving the notice and God bless them for paying it. That's the way it's supposed to work. Yeah?
I have no knowledge of any.
Okay, well, possibly it was your grandfather or somebody, anyway, somebody was receiving it and somebody was paying it. So, that, from our perspective, that's an indication that the system is working. We would have no other basis for making further inquiry.
Well, it was my grandfather or I, again, and it was not in their name, it was in the company's, we notate it, in their name. So, we, we have no.
Sorry, so, again, to administration, when, prior to 2012, when tax notices were sent, who were they sent to?
I should have, I should have, prior to, before the protest, is the error wrong, was that it's fish back? Is the buyer, it's not a fish on paper, but regardless, if we were, 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 if we[1385.12] The, the issue that we have now is that there are taxes owing from 2012 to present day and because they were not paid in the timeframe specified under the respective bylaws between 2012 and 2016, penalties have been applied and are sitting on the account. And with the bylaw and with the legalities around that aspect, administration, other than in the current year, has no ability to address the penalties. The taxes are owing. I believe the owner understands that and acknowledges that the taxes are owing. And for, we have a odd confluence of circumstance that has led us to today, but any consideration on penalties other than current year, and because the request is to waive all penalties, is a question that only counsel can consider and then ultimately decide upon. I don't know if that helps, but that's sort of the best level of clarity I can give on sort of these two stages in what has been an issue from 27, 2007 to present day.
So, and again, just for clarity, when you took ownership in 2011 from Modesta Enterprises, right, did one or the other of you engage the services of a lawyer or legal representative of any kind? Same? Okay. And in that event, again, the normal procedure would be that the legal representative would forward a notice to the town. Did she indicate, have you contacted her office to?
I don't think she gave me an authority on the town. That's all I can say.
Okay. And I don't, I certainly wouldn't presume to offer legal advice in this forum, but I think they, I want you to understand the issue that counsel is struggling with. The only way a municipality will know that there is a new owner is if the individuals conducting the transaction on behalf of the parties notify the municipality. And if there is no evidence, and there isn't any evidence before us, that in 2011, the ownership changed, there's, the municipality has absolutely no reason to believe it has changed.
I'm only aware of the fact now.
Yeah.
But had, had it been corrected, I would have still been aware of it.
Yeah. Well, and that is, that is true. Yeah, if, yeah. No, no, and that's not what we're, we absolutely take you at your word. The, the issue, however, of whether or not it was done correctly in '27, whether the correct notice was provided or done in, correctly in 2011, is not at all a matter, well, let me rephrase that. It is a matter between you and the legal representative that represented you at the time, or at least it would seem to be. Again, I'm not presuming to provide legal advice in this forum, but that's the issue that counsel struggles with on this. There are cases in every municipality where a notice is provided, it's misfiled or filed late, or there's a timing issue or what have you. Things are determined at a later date and then they're corrected. If counsel sees, and we haven't got to the decision item yet, so I don't want to presume what counsel's going to do with this item, but if counsel sees that the municipality could or should have done something differently to rectify the situation, there may be a course of action that we can take to offer you redress. If counsel does not see that, based on the information we have before us, there's little that they can or should do. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was really clear from 2007. I was very anxious and then go on and ask for my own details.
Yeah.
I was thinking of notices that I would have.
Yep.
Because it was a viewing court in 2011. It never even occurred to me.
Yeah. And I don't suppose the manager or owners of the trailer court ever mentioned that to tenants? Yeah. Right. Does counsel have any questions? Counselor Bossert.
Good morning, and thanks for coming in, Carolyn. I can see that this is a stressful situation for you. When you became the owner of the mobile at, in Pleasant View in 2011, it was a change of hands between yourself and your grandfather's company. Now, you would have been the new owner of the mobile, and were you not expected at that time to sign a new agreement with Pleasant View as the new tenant? Because on that contract, as a lot tenant at Pleasant View, it says in there that you're responsible to pay the taxes. So, okay.
Thank you very much, Carolyn, for coming down and, and sharing with us what's evolved over this. It's a unique set of circumstances for sure. And, and I guess to the extent that it's a confusing set of circumstances, we understand it better. So, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. All right. Under Delegations, 5.4 is a presentation from, with regard to emergency services, but I gather that's waiting until later in the agenda? Is that right? Okay. So we'll move on to item 6.0, we'll deal with 6.1, and then I'll call a short break. Item 6.1, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you, Your Worship. In reviewing outstanding property tax accounts for mobile homes within town, administration has made contact with the owner of Roll 86001800 by utilizing an owner listing from the mobile home park manager. Administration advised the owner of the mobile home, the property taxes were in arrears and the penalties were owed as a result. The total amount outstanding, 2,823.53, which includes penalty fees of 1,392.72. During the discussion with the mobile homeowner, administration has informed that a letter was sent to the town from the legal representative acting on behalf of the owner when the mobile home was purchased in 2011. The owner advised that she has not received correspondence from the town and any mail delivered to her mailing address for the previous owner was marked, returned to sender and put back in the mail delivery. Administration has investigated the Roll file for the property and confirmed there had not been receipt of any correspondence from the owner's legal representative until September of this year. As such, there was not an ownership change in the town's records previously. The owner has submitted a formal request to have the penalties in the amount of 1,392.72 waived. This item was reviewed in October 26, 2016 Governance Priorities Meeting, where counsel requested administration contact the owner to allow another opportunity to provide documentation that the 2011 ownership change was sent to the town office. A letter from the mayor was sent to the owner requesting the same. Additionally, the revenue manager called the owner October 26, 2016, to request additional documents that would show the ownership change was sent to the town office. The owner said there was nothing else to provide. I therefore move that counsel denies the request of a waiver of any tax penalties for the tax Roll number 86001800.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. We have, of course, in the Agenda Package, three options presented to us, which counsel is well aware of. We can either approve the waiver, deny the waiver, or table the request to a future counsel meeting. It would, it would seem to me that there may be an avenue that hasn't been fully exhausted here in relation to the legal representation of this taxpayer. And, and I think I would like the municipality to not only do but be seen to be doing everything we can to ensure fairness, whether delivered by us or others, to this taxpayer. The, so what I'm suggesting is that there may be good reason to table this decision. Counselor Schuler has made a motion to deny the request, and I'll, I'll take a discussion on the motion. However, if there is a tabling motion, we will go straight to that. So, any discussion on Counselor Schuler's motion? Counselor Long?
Just to assure your concerns and would be happy to make that table motion.
All right. And so with a tabling motion, Ms., sorry, Mr. Dibbin? You had to.
Yes, just on the, the main motion, Your Worship, with respect to the options that are lined out, administration at this point would just advise counsel that we would be supportive of option B, that administration and various officers of administration, in talking not only with the landowner but also with, providing a number of opportunities to advise a potential recourse, including every foreseeable opportunity to contact legal representation that was utilized in the transaction, and sought numerous occasions to see whether or not there was any other corresponding evidence that could be ascertained to corroborate. The, the property or the land, mobile homeowner's assertion that, that notice was provided, we have been unable to ascertain that. There has been nothing to corroborate that timing and the receipt of that, either from the mobile homeowner or the representative that was engaged at the time. And so accordingly, from an administration perspective, and it's not with, without regret, understanding the unfortunate confluence of circumstance, but from an administration perspective, this was, this would be the option that would be appropriate, that we would recommend to, to counsel.
All right, thank you. Just to back up, Counselor, Counselor Long made a tabling motion. In this context, my recollect, my recollection is that a tabling motion has to be entertained immediately. There's no discussion on a tabling motion. And so, without, I guess my mind-reading skills aren't what they used to be, and I thought you might have been speaking to that point.
My exact words were, I would be happy to make the table motion. I didn't actually.
Oh, you didn't make the table. All right. So really, that was just a comment? Okay.
I could decrease the discussion.
Yeah, all right. Okay, well, here we are again. Counselor Frederickson? I bumped you out of the queue, so apologies.
Yeah, I know, right? What the heck? I, I echo what Mr. Dibbin has said in our recent discussion with the landowner. One of the, one of the nuggets of wisdom that you had shared is that we're, we're struggling with the fact of determining whether it's municipality's fault or whether the fault lies outside the municipality's realm. And from what I understand, even given the complicated stuff that happened in 2007, that when the change of ownership happened, no papers were given our way from legal representation. Therefore, the fault does not reside on the municipality. We, we didn't have papers to indicate change from the information that we had got from administration. It sounds like they have exhausted those avenues. I'm just putting my comments out there that I do support administration's position on this.
All right. Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to concur with Mr. Dibbin and Counselor Frederickson. It appears that there has been due diligence on the behalf of the municipality to rectify the situation, to uncover all the facts as they present themselves. And just listening to Ms. Lychuk's testimony this morning, I believe that she, she earnestly believes that all that she was meant to do was done, and I do sympathize with her situation. It is maybe difficult to address these penalties and the taxes that are still owing, but as it has been determined, the fault has not found itself at the feet of the municipality.
Anyone else? Counselor Long?
Thank you. The reason for my concern, and I want to make sure we get this absolutely right, because I don't like doing these things one bit, certainly not in this situation, but the question that I have relates to, I mean, I have no doubt that we've done things right at our end, but there is apparently the suggestion that legal counsel was involved in 2011 and did contact us or attempt to contact us. I'd like clarification. There was some things, do they have, can they produce paperwork at the other end that it was sent, regardless of whether it arrived or not? That's, that's the stumbling block for me.
Mr. Dibbin?
I, I might ask the revenue manager to comment if I don't have all of the information. My understanding, Counselor Long, is that contact was made with the mobile homeowner to afford the opportunity for any information that she could provide, or it was indicated that could be provided on her behalf from others who may have acted. Initially, we were not aware of whether or not there was representation supporting them for a transaction at some point in the, in the chain of events, and that request had been made on a, at least two occasions, and there has been nothing that we can source that would support that. I cannot answer whether or not we contacted any legal firm or legal representative directly, but that there has been at multiple occasions, speaking directly to that point, if there's any other information that can be provided to support this, and we have not received anything.
All right. Going back to, while the package in the Agenda clearly identifies a letter that was authored by myself on behalf of counsel, requesting the taxpayer to consult with the legal representative, if there was one, and it appears there was one, to check their records, to provide what, what ought to have been provided, or provide evidence that it was provided, more to the point. There was nothing forthcoming, and we've heard the, the taxpayer indicate here that she was provided with what we, what she was provided with, and she in turn provided that to the town, but apparently, it, well, not apparently, it certainly does fall short of evidence that, that notice was sent at the appropriate time. The point of the suggestion for a tabling motion was to do just that, to assist a taxpayer in getting that information. But the advisability of getting into affairs that are private by definition between the taxpayer and her, her representative are, I guess that's an open question thus far. So, did you have a comment?
Just, just on that point, Your Worship, while I can certainly appreciate from a counsel perspective, the, the effort and that aspect, I would simply, on behalf of administration, say that would take us beyond what we would view an appropriate role of administration to be. That the, the mayor's letter of October advising or affording the opportunity for the mobile homeowner to do just that, I believe was very clear and very explicit, and provided that opportunity from an appropriate level, which was from counsel, not from administration. And so certainly, counsel is well within its prerogative and authority to direct administration to do that, but administration, the advisability of that administration would just provide a, a word of caution in that that could take us down into an advocacy role that is not necessarily an appropriate role of administration or its staff.
All right. Anything further on Counselor Schuler's motion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, that's carried. Going to call a 10-minute break. Thank you. Item 6.2, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. At the November 2, 2016 Governance and Priorities Meeting, Discussion of Cost-Saving Measures for the 2017 Fiscal Year and the Annual Cost of Living Increase or Adjustment to Council's Renumeration as per Policy C-01-00 were discussed. It was determined that counsel would be willing to forego the increase for the upcoming 2017 year. Therefore, I move the waiver of the 2017 council cost of living increase or adjustment.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Long?
Thank you. We've had to make some difficult decisions over the last few weeks in the budget meetings. This is not a difficult decision, I think, given that the sacrifices we've asked our administration to make. It's only right that we set an example here and forego our scheduled pay increase for this year, so I'm happy to see this coming forward, and I look forward to voting.
Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I echo those comments, that we've had a very detailed budget discussion this year and been reviewing all of our departments and looking at how we can reduce expenditures. So I think that it's important that we play a role as much as anyone else, if not more. Our revenues are down, and we have began extensive asset management, which means we're looking at the life cycle of everything, and there's going to be a lot of big projects coming up in the future that we need to get prepared for, and I think that it's really important we balance where we're at now so that we don't, we don't struggle in the future to pay for things at the same time, so, thank you.
Anything further? All right. All in favor? That's carried. Item 6.3, Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On December 9, 2016, the Town of Drayton Valley and the community volunteers will host the Fired Up for the Holidays. This event will allow 50 to 80 youth aged 13 to 17 to participate in activities and a campfire activity free of charge. The Fired Up for the Holidays event provides a unique experience combining arts, physical activity, and sociali, socialization in an outdoor setting. The following services are planned for this year's events: busing to and from the site, a campfire, refreshments to cook over the campfire, glow-in-the-dark capture the flag, snowshoeing, and graffiti art. The town's insurer has indicated that activities and events endorsed by a resolution of council will be recognized as an insured event, therefore minimizing the need for special events insurance. Administration is therefore recommending that the Fired Up for the Holidays event be endorsed by the town, by town council as an insured activity for the municipality or of the municipality. Therefore, I move that the town, that council endorses the Fired Up for the Holidays event as an insured event.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Natto?
Not specifically to the insurance component, but I just wanted to commend our program manager and community services. I think this age group for youth is often overlooked. It's really easy to do programming for small children, but I'm really proud of our community that we step up and do things for all ages, and I think our department should be commended for thinking up a really cool, innovative things to engage youth of all different sectors. So I'm really pleased with the event. I know it was held on a smaller scale last year, and obviously it's ramping up for, on a bigger scale because of success, so I'm really pleased. I'm looking forward to seeing how this year turns out. I will endeavor to get there. I have almost a 13-year-old. Thanks.
If it were 13 to 17 people in the 50 to 80 age group, I know some other people would be interested in attending. Counselor Frederickson, did you have?
I share Nicole's comments, but I also wanted to state too that I do like seeing that this is something that does embrace outdoors, it embraces the winter outdoors in our community, which is something that, I know we have some advocates on this council talking about embracing outdoors, get involved with outdoor groups. So I'm happy to see that not only are we looking at that young age group, but we're looking at an age group and getting them enjoying outside, which we have just these beautiful outdoor infrastructure parks around us, like it, it's a crime not to enjoy the outdoors in this place, so thank you for that.
And it's cost-effective recreation, outdoor recreation. Anything further? All right, all in favor? That's carried. Item 6.4, Counselor Frederickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.4, Appointment of Town Financial Auditor. A request for proposals for the financial audit services for the Town of Drayton Valley was issued on October 7, 2016, seeking services for a three-year fiscal period, representing the calendar years 2016 through and including 2018. Upon the date of closing of the request for proposals, four proposals were received. Administration has conducted an evaluation of the four proposals based upon the town's established criteria. The listing of the proposals received and corresponding bid rates were as follows: Hawkins E.Ep Dumont LLP, $117,000; Fedema and Company Hawkins-Ep-Dumont LLP, $117,000; Fedema &amp; Company, $142,150; KPMG, $148,500; Wild &amp; Company, The accounting firm of Hawkins-Ep-Dumont LLP was found to have submitted the strongest bid, both quantitatively and qualitatively, and it is administration's recommendation that the firm be awarded the contract for services. I therefore move that council approve retaining the services of Hawkins-Ep-Dumont LLP as financial auditor for the Town of Drayton Valley for a three-year fiscal period for the calendar years 2016 through and including 2018.
Thank you, Council Frederiksen. Any discussion on this motion? Did administration wish to make any comments?
No. We're very happy with Hawkins-Ep-Dumont in the past, and we feel their bid was excellent. We would like to thank all four of the firms that submitted bids, Hawkins-Ep, KPMG, Fedema &amp; Company, and Wild &amp; Company. They all gave us very good bids, and we thank them for participating, but we felt that the strongest bid came from Hawkins-Ep-Dumont, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and we look forward to council's decision.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? No? All right. All in favor? That's carried. 6.5, Councilor Nato. Naming of Open Space Development.
Sometimes there's a little mystery with these. It's the irony that I'm getting. This one is not lost on me. I'm making people nervous. So the town's new park will get in the old age.
Better nervous than angry.
Is an initiative by the Town of Drayton Valley to revitalize an open expanse of land situated centrally to the town's residential population. The development is a premier park setting that will generate activity, connectividence, yeah, friendships, respect, tolerance, and an enhanced quality of life. These elements are all indicative of a resilient community. Earlier this summer, administration implemented the town's asset naming policy and invited the community to suggest names of the new park. Numerous suggestions were received, and council engaged itself in an exercise to select a name that would identify the park for all individuals and families that will use the many amenities in the park. The town council is therefore being requested to approve a name for the new park. So I have two options before me. The council approve the name of the park, and the council not approve the name of the park as Discovery Park, requiring that administration pursue different naming options, because it was a lot of fun. Therefore, I make the motion the council approve the name of the new park as Discovery Park.
That's a brilliant motion. Thank you so much for... And the rise and fall in your voice, I didn't notice that a bit? Council Frederiksen? Oh, yeah, let's have discussion on the motion. Council Frederiksen?
I know how eager you are there, Mr. Mayor. I love how eloquently this background is written, because there was a lot of discussion. The names have come, had come back to the table several times. There was discussion with regards to names in terms of historical references, cultural references, activity use of the park area. And initially, I think the Discovery Park name wasn't one that initially I found that palatable, however, in mulling it around a bit, looking at a name in which allows us to grow and develop park uses and allow the park to kind of develop its own identity. I think Discovery Park is a broad enough name that it does kind of check off all those boxes in terms of our historical references, our active use of that area, and although initially I was not endorsing this park name, it has grown slightly, like, slightly.
Thank you, Council Bossert. Then Council Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The naming of this park was quite an exercise for our council, and when we saddled on some, maybe the last three or four different choices of names, the name of Discovery Park did resonate with me. I've had a chance to spend some time in the park, to walk through it, to try out some of the fitness equipment in there, to enjoy the landscape that's in there, and it truly, although Discovery Park may not have been given that name solely on what there is to discover in that park, there is a lot to discover, not only in the park, but also about the person utilizing the park. It's a fitness park, it's an activity park, it's also a very welcoming space just to enjoy time, so I think it is aptly named, and it is a wonderful new asset for our community to enjoy.
Council Schuler? She took a pass.
Thank you. I'm still torn with the name, but I'm just pleased that we finally have this park. I remember a number of years ago when it was an open field that was not being utilized really in any way, shape, or form. We'd have a little bit of use in the spring when soccer was abounding, but other than that, that space was not being utilized. And I think the town now has a fabulous asset, no matter what we name it, that, you know, will be there for, you know, future generations to enjoy. So I'm just very pleased that we've been able to provide a park that the whole community can use.
Thank you, Council Schuler. Anything further? Council Nato? This should be good.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the comments of Council Frederiksen. I can't get behind the name, and I do, having percolated on it for a little time, I do see there are lots of things to discover within the park. And to Council Bossert, we forgot to mention the arts and culture components in it as well, so there is a little bit of everything, and I think it represents a little bit of everything about the community, and there is new things to discover within this beautiful park. So I think we had so many choices and so many discussions, but this is something that I'm happy to put forward.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I was reminded yesterday that one of the things I so frequently say when I'm discussing this space is that it is the most substantial act of urban renewal, neighborhood revitalization this community has ever seen in its nearly 60-year history, and that is true. More to the point, for those who are not yet fully in love with the new name, whatever that name may be, because we haven't voted yet, Discovery speaks to a number of things about this community. It speaks to our roots as a pioneering oil and gas-based economy. It speaks to who we are, what we become, and what we are surprised sometimes to find that we become. This space will draw people out of their homes, it will foster an improved sense of community and neighborhood renewal. And in addition to the physical characteristics of the space, I cannot think of a better name that will serve our community. I'm extremely proud of our community for its support of this development going forward. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. The new space shall henceforth be called Discovery Park. Item 6.6, Councilor Long. By the way, pardon me, I want to thank Council Nato for that motion. I know these things aren't easy. Item 6.6.
Thank you. Lack of specialized transportation in Drayton Valley and the surrounding area has been an ongoing identified issue for our community. Transportation study conducted in 2012 by the town and our friends in Brazos County recognized this gap in transportation services for seniors and people with disabilities. Drayton Valley and District FCSS was contacted, contracted, sorry, by West Central Alberta and Alberta Miki off-settlement about a pilot project through Medically at Risk Driver Center. That group has put a call out for grant applications to work in conjunction with the center to implement a sustainable model of alternative transportation for seniors and persons with disabilities in rural Alberta. This collaboration, if the application is successful, will help to develop and implement a specialized transportation plan for Drayton Valley and the surrounding area that is feasible and sustainable for the long term. Grant funds are available to develop a business plan for specialized transportation that addresses the service delivery model, the financial budgets, the sources of funding for capital and operating needs, and implementation strategies. Currently, administration is working with the Drayton Valley Community Bus Association to apply for this project, as the association has agreed to provide the specialized transportation service when all program logistics have been confirmed. As the official signatory for the MARD grant application, the Community Bus Association will be requesting MARD grant funding of $34,000. There is no requirement for matching funds for this grant program. At this time, we do not have specialized transportation in Drayton Valley and surrounding area. Although there is a taxi service, there are limitations for seniors and people with disabilities, including affordability and ease of access. Therefore, I move that council provide a letter of support for the grant application through the Medically at Risk Driver Center.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Council Frederiksen?
I'm happy to see this motion come forward. Drayton Valley isn't alone in looking at trying to discover ways in which we can assist or provide an answer to the question of how do our seniors get around in our community, as well as from our community to appointments in Edmonton, Red Deer, for medical-based issues. So I am very pleased to be putting support behind the request for this letter. I am pleased with our community service department, not for only bringing this information forward, but also for the efforts that they have done in working with other partner groups, including our seniors lodges, bus association, FCSS been identified. I know there is a whole list of people that you guys have worked with. In order to really develop a made in Drayton Valley solution to this, transportation is not an issue that doesn't, it comes with a cost, and for a community our size, we are really trying to look at ways in which we can create a solution that, again, is financially feasible and sustainable. So I'm, hopefully this is a good, solid first step, and, because we're all getting older, our population is getting older, this is not an issue that's going to be going away anytime soon.
Anything further? Council Nato?
I just wanted to say, I support this 100%. Previously, you know the challenges, and you can appreciate the challenges that people who have disabilities or have lack of transportation have to address in their day-to-day lives. Up until this year, with my father's two strokes and being in a wheelchair, it really struck me on the challenges and the impacts on family and the quality of life for an individual that really wouldn't be able to afford a specialized vehicle of their own in a family, and just the quality of life and getting out and experiencing the world around them, and rather than being homebound and dependent on others for that. So I just want to say, just on a personal level, I can appreciate this so much more than ever, and the importance of having this in our community for people with challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Look forward to that. Item 6.7, Council Schuler.
Thank you, worship. The Fire Service is asking council for a change in the five-year level of service delivery program. Time schedule moving medical response from beyond 2018 to the present year of 2016. In 2014, the Fire Service presented to council a detailed plan outlining a five-year plan for the implementation of specialized services within the department. Included within the plan was a review and possible initiation of a medical response program beyond 2018. Council approved the plan as presented by the Fire Services in June 2014. Since 2014, many things have changed in regards to emergency medical response in Alberta. Alberta Health Services has come forward with a grant opportunity which provide funding to local fire departments to access training opportunities and assist in the purchase of medical equipment. Many of the strict policies that were in place in 2014 have been changed, making it easier for fire departments to offer some type of medical response program. The grant application can be made for up to a maximum of $3,000, which covers training and equipment costs. It should be noted that this grant program has not been formulated to replace the existing emergency medical services already in the community, but rather to support it. By approving a year change from beyond 2018 to the present year of 2016 for a medical response program, it will allow the Drayton Valley Brazos County Fire Service the opportunity to apply for grant funding, which would provide much-needed medical training and equipment for the department. Sorry, technical difficulties. I therefore move that council approve a time change in the level of service delivery program timeline for medical response from beyond 2018 to the current year of 2016.
Thank you, Council Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Council Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have watched quite diligently as our fire services have been regularly pressed into medical service calls over the last few years because of other situations in our community, i.e. the shortage of ambulance availability. And for council to have the ability to change a timeline to enable the fire department to apply for this grant that enables them to access funding for training and for equipment can only support the good work that you are already doing, so I am fully in favor of moving this timeline.
All right. Well said. Anything further? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Item 6.8, Council Wheeler.
Thank you. In the 2016 budget deliberations, council was provided with the estimate cost for a new fire rescue pumper truck for Station 3 in Drayton Valley. The total cost for the truck was budgeted at $700,000, of which the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazos County would each share at the cost of $350,000. Fortunately, the provincial joint grant application was approved, resulting in $350,000 being awarded to the joint municipalities for this project. Consequently, each municipality was to share the remaining cost for the project at $175,000 each. A request for proposals was issued to fire apparatus manufacturers, and five bid proposals were received. Of the five bid proposals, only three met the specifications outlined in the request for proposal. Unfortunately, all three of the remaining bids exceed the $700,000 budget, which was originally established due to the Canadian US dollar exchange rate and the larger engine that meets specifications. The three bids were from Fort Gary Fire Truck, Hub Fire Engines, and Rocky Mountain Phoenix. Accordingly, administration is requesting that council approve the expenditure cost of $207,119.50 for the town's portion of the fire rescue pumper truck, which has a total cost of $764,239 plus GST. Drayton Valley Brazos County Fire Services, subject to approval of the requested expenditure increase by town and county councils, is proposing to award the tender to Fort Gary Fire Trucks. Fire Trucks, which provided a bid of $764,239 plus GST. That proposal represents the lowest bid of the three eligible. Should approval for the grant for this proceed, the Fire will require $76,294 from, in the 2016, from the town, half the cost of the down payment, and the remainder of the funds carried forward to 2017. Therefore, I move that council approve the expenditure of $207,119.50 for the town's portion of the fire rescue pumper truck for Station 3, subject to approval of the same amount by Brazos County Council, for a total cost of $764,239 plus GST. And council approve awarding the tender to Fort Gary Fire Trucks in the amount of $764,239 plus GST for the fire rescue pumper truck for Station 3. And that council approve the carry-forward funds into the 2017 budget for the Fire Services' fire rescue pumper truck for Station 3 in the amount of $130,825.50.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. I have a question for the Fire Service, Camille, perhaps you may be able to answer this. My understanding is that Fort Gary Fire Trucks is, despite the name, is an American company, is that correct? Yeah? Why are we paying them GST? Can anybody in administration answer that?
I believe they have dealers through Canada that we've worked it through, but I'd need to confirm.
So the, if Counselor Wheeler is amenable to this, the, the motion should really read plus GST if applicable, right? In that way, we're covered. Yeah?
Yeah, I believe that would be a good solution to cover our bases.
I'm acceptable to that amendment.
Okay. Counselor Frederiksen?
Should these be three separate motions?
They can be. They weren't presented as three separate motions, so I don't think we want to mess with it, but did you have a suggestion?
I figured because the fir, the second two are contingent on the first one in the first place, it's kind of an all-or-nothing package.
Great. Okay. So we, we have the motion. Counselor Wheeler accepted that as a friendly amendment, the if applicable after the reference to GST. Is there any further discussion on the motion? No? Seeing none. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks very much. Thank you, Camille. All right. 6.9, Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr.
Sixtieth Anniversary Grant Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In recognition of the sixtieth, sixtieth anniversary of the town of Drayton Valley, and in desire to encourage active participation in events and activities to mark this milestone, a special grant program has been proposed. This grant program is intended to foster active participation in the program, event, and legacy undertakings in conjunction with the town's anniversary. Administration has prepared the attached policy A0616, consistent with the existing policies for town grants, for council's consideration. There are some notable exceptions to the standard requirements for grants, which are distributed annually. Recipients may not, recipients need not show financial viability for their organization, given that the application may be an individual or an ad hoc group proposing an event, an event in celebration of this momentous year. Further, a report will not be required following the completion of the event. The proposed policy sets out the funding, sets out that funding will be established within the 2017 budget year and will be distributed in increments of $600 per approved application. Therefore, I move that council approve the town of Drayton Valley's sixtieth anniversary grant policy A0616 as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Yes. Under Section 8, the organizations or community events that will not be considered, I was just wondering if there's a rationale as why educational institutions would not be considered, and actually the same with E for corporate and private businesses. I understand that some of those do make money, but if they're still doing something to incorporate the sixtieth anniversary, that would be above and beyond what they would normally be performing. I'm not sure why they would be excluded from applying.
I'll ask administration, I'll ask Annette to comment on it if she has a, or who's got a comment, Shandra? Yep. My answer to that would be the policy deliberately mirrors existing policy. That's the answer? Okay. Counselor Wheeler's got another.
Is not specifically on the policy, but just then, I'm not sure if we'd be able to look at amending that, but I think that this is a special, this isn't an ongoing forever events application, this is a special limited sixtieth anniversary policy, and I think we'd want to encourage anyone in the community to be hosting events to support that, so.
What I would say to that, and I certainly take the point, I understand that, and this is a special occasion in our history. Individuals and organizations that routinely crop up around events such as this, and they may already be part of an educational institution or on staff or, or associated with it, or they may be part of a commercial enterprise, which is typically the case, but that does not prevent individuals or ad hoc organizations from, from creating. It means that the business themselves, or the school, or school board themselves cannot be the applicant. But efforts can still be undertaken by people who are members of those organizations. Follow what I'm saying?
At an event that is their business event, say Company X is having a barbecue and doing other things, and they decide they want to add something for the sixtieth anniversary. That's what we're saying is not allowed if it is.
Saying that the business can't be the applicant.
Okay.
Anything further? Counselor Frederiksen?
You're right, this is mirrored after existing policies, so we do want to keep some sort of continuity. I can appreciate that it is a special one-off event. However, I am looking at this too as this could be an opportunity for those service clubs or, or individuals or whatever else that would typically, they, that would qualify under the application to be able to work in conjunction with businesses, which we see at a lot of our events anyways. Perhaps a primary provider is, say Rotary Club, but yet they're getting sponsorship from M&amp;M Meats for their food or get, so there's still an incorporation of people into an event. I see it as being something that would continue to promote that service club business collaboration, which is what has kind of occurred already in our community.
Counselor Natto?
I thi, I take Counselor Wheeler's point, and, and I'm less concerned about the business component of it, but I think for the educational purposes, a lot of, I believe it's Grade 4 and Grade 6, that talk about citizenship and, and governance, obviously, and I think this would be an interesting thing to participate in terms of their citizenship term, but then as a school, they wouldn't be able to apply, but as a class, then, would they be able to? Yes. Okay, so just some clarity in terms of communication out to the community, then, because we could approach it that way, that, and that's fine, and if that's clear, then I support maintaining it as is, as long as we communicate a little better on that, because in reading that, it, it does seem very black and white, and it's clear there is a gray issue on too, so I don't know how to, how to address that.
I think we trust the process, but, sorry, Ms. Jason, do you have?
Thank you. No, certainly when it comes to the interpretation of several of our grant programs, there is some room for interpretation, and certainly in terms of the naming of educational institutions. The previous language speaks to any group or organization or entity, whether it's formally registered or not, to, toward putting together a project. So a group of students within a school is not recognized as an educational institution. If the application were to come from the school division itself, the school board itself, that's the institution that would be recognized. But certainly a group or an entity that is not formally registered, that's the intent of this grant. So there are certain areas that we can allow things to occur, and the same with the businesses and corporations. It's a matter of, as Counsel, Counselor Frederiksen said, it's a matter of collaboration with other groups.
Anything further? Counselor Bossert?
I just appreciate that council, or that policy has come forward, giving individuals and groups opportunity to apply for grants, excuse me, up to $600 apiece, to come up with creative and unique ways to celebrate the community's landmark in our sixtieth anniversary. So I look forward to see what grant applications come forward.
All right. Counselor Frederiksen?
Yes, similar to what Deb had said, I just wanted to thank Pam for her work on this grant applica, or this grant application, or policy, sorry. Also, one piece that I really like in this is the very last piece, it's number 14 on the second last page. Basically, the inclusiveness of town logo and the powered-by language. So just kind of seeing, getting our, getting the community brand out there and getting some events and faces, creating that emotional link with our brand, since it is new, that, you know, we need to build on that.
I was particularly pleased with that, so thank you for your work there. Anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Moving on, where are we? Department reports. Engineering and Development? Mr. Fraser.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. I would like to ask Jen Martin maybe to come to the podium here, just to go over the list which we handed out for planning and development, and she can just briefly describe what's been applied for, what's been approved, I should say, and answer any questions if there are any. So, thanks. Thanks, Jen.
Morning. It's the CT scanner. Anything, Counselor Frederiksen?
I'm just wondering, driving from, and I'm, I'm not sure what the signage application was, but driving from Tim Horton's into town, there is a sign that's currently on Secura Auctions land site, that's on the side of a trailer, directly in front of the billboard that's there. I'm wondering, is there, was that, was that a permitted sign? I know I'm putting you on the spot there, and that could be, put it to the side and, and come back with it, but I'm just, it's, pardon? Oh, well, it's just, it's blocking the current billboard that we have there, and I just thought, I, you know, placement.
That sounds good. Anything further? Counselor Bossert?
As far as item number four, the hospital renovations and installation of the equipment, I can verify it is for the CT scanner. I happened to be up at the hospital the morning they started the renovations, so I understand that they're expecting the scanner itself December 21st to be operational in the new year. It's good news for our community.
Thanks very much.
Great, thanks very much, Jen. So with respect to other aspects of the Engineering and Development Department, in Utilities, we had a break-in which occurred on November 14th at the water treatment plant. A pickup truck, a truck was stolen, another one was damaged, and of course, the fence was damaged when they're getting into the site. So we have contacted their insurance. The stolen pickup truck has not been recovered yet, and otherwise, we have made the repairs on the other vehicles and the fence. About, the only good thing about that is the stolen, the pickup they stole was probably the worst-conditioned pickup we had in town, so.
So silver lining.
The silver lining, yep. Additionally, the three main water valves were repaired over the last couple of weeks and, and a fire hydrant that we were having issues with. With respect to Public Works, since the last council, Paul Ma, the manager of Public Works, has left the town, town employment, and Bill Adams has, has assumed the role of manager of both Public Works and Utilities. We'd like to wish Paul well in his future endeavors. Last week, the night of November 15th, we had a, a snowfall, fairly heavy fluffy white snow. We did deploy the sanding trucks early on the morning of the 16th, starting at about 5:00 a.m., and we were able to get by with sanding main routes and critical intersections and clearing the sidewalks in the downtown area. We did not deploy the graders, so we knew that the weather forecast was for melting temperatures, and we figured it was going to clear itself, itself up fairly quickly, and streets were possible. Additionally, staff have been putting up Christmas lights in town, as well as the Christmas banners over the last couple of weeks. With respect to construction activities, 43rd Avenue extension was opened formally, and the mayor opened it on November 8th, skillfully driving the hybrid between two strategically-placed fire trucks, to break the wordman. So thank you very much for that.
Thread the needle.
Yeah. Second lift paving and landscaping will be done next year to complete that project, as well as the final paving on Beckett. The McElhaney Traffic Control Report was finalized and received and discussed last night at the Traffic Advisory Committee. The proposals for curbside collection and recycling for the town have been received and are currently under review, and we are receiving new tenders for Mackenzie Avenue pavement rehabilitation tomorrow, tomorrow at 2:00. And so the, the hope is to do construction during 2017, and hopefully, prices will be better than what we received last time, but we, we can't really say for sure. Just to add something with respect to planning and development, the 50th Street ASP has been circulated to Brazos County for comments, as well as other agencies, and we have been receiving feedback. In fact, the feedback we receive from the county is actually a thicker document than the ASP itself, so I'm not sure if that's a good thing or not. We also have initial drafts of the Debbie Lands ASP and the Biomile ASP, however, there is additional work required to complete those. With respect to sustainability, I was advised by Annette, the Sustainability Coordinator, that the Women in Leadership Program is coming together for the new year, and she will be getting all the mentors, which include counselors, together to meet and discuss in the, in the near future. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Just one... Just one, one matter, the McElhaney study, I would like that to be presented to council at a GMP meeting in the not-too-distant future. We'll work on a date. Any questions? Okay. We'll move on to community services and FCSS. Ms. Jason.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a few things on the go. One, just want to make an announcement that within our Early Childhood Development Center, the Wild Growth School Division has accepted and approved a proposal to move forward with our kindergarten program, starting in September of 2017. So, again, this is, it just speaks so well to the very original business plan that was developed for the Early Childhood Development Center in terms of, you know, creating that hub for quality childcare within the community. And whether that's offered through a number of different services or a different number of venues, it just, it really speaks well to the staff at the childcare center and what they're trying to do to make that business plan just follow its guided course. So, really great to hear and we'll continue to work with the Wild Growth School Division and report back to council on just how that's going to develop. So, just, the school board has given that nod of approval, so we'll continue to flesh out that program for council and for our community. The outdoor rink, I want to recognize a few volunteers that have stepped forward from the community to help out with constructing the ice surface in our new outdoor rink. So, recognizing that the temperatures are opportune for putting the ice in, they're going to take advantage of some evening time and as local volunteers start to put the ice in on the outdoor rink. We do ask, however, that members of the public just respect the fact that please don't go on until the ice has been completed because during the process of building the ice, it can be pretty fairly brittle and of course, thin, so we want to make sure that there's enough of a layer of water on there and ice before people actually get on there and start to use it. As was discussed during the regular council meeting, the specialized transportation, going after the grant application for those funds, we hope that those funds will help us with pulling together the plan that we need to work with our local organization, the Community Bus Association, to come up with something that's sustainable and certainly long-term. We've been through some pilot projects, so we're very anxious to find something that is, that will stick for the long term. With respect to homelessness, it's also not only in terms of the Christmas season, but certainly the snow on the ground is another further indicator of the impact of homelessness within rural communities and we're not certainly alone when it comes to knowing that we have that issue ever so present in our community. So, the grant funding through ARDN is hopefully going to give us, again, another permanent sustainable plan to deal with homelessness within our community and again, looking at some federal support coming behind that program as well too, not just provincial. Last thing to report on is staff within FCSS or attending the FCSS AA Provincial Conference. And if council will recall, council put its support behind a resolution being presented to the association with respect to parenting after separation. So, again, I think that's one of the great things about having FCSS departments within municipalities is that councils within those municipalities can give their support behind initiatives that really mean something to the people that FCSS boards try to serve and provide services to. So, hopefully, the resolution being presented will put parenting after separation into its proper structure and not deal with it as an economic solution and really look at the need for parenting after separation as a one-on-one, person-to-person approach and course and guidance for those people who need it. So, we'll keep council informed of that. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Council Neto.
Just please send our regards and congratulations to the staff at ECDC. That's remarkable and what a great partnership. I think that's a great opportunity for other communities and as usual, Drayton is leading the way on these initiatives and couldn't be prouder.
It is, it is a jewel in our community and it's the people that make it so. Thank you. Where are we? 7.3 Economic Development, Eric Burton.
So, there are two things I'm going to highlight today. One is brief and one is less brief. So, the first, the brief one is, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting recently and it was another great meeting. They have a good group of volunteers continuing to come out and I continue to be impressed with their, the level of professionalism that they're approaching important issues. And I think, you know, it is challenging, they're doing a lot of capacity building and a lot of review of their financial position and their bylaws and these are some of the things that organizations sometimes have to do some heavy lifting around and it's not glamorous work, but they are, by what I can see, doing a lot of hard work behind the scenes. And so, my hat is off to the volunteers at the Chamber of Commerce and the work they're doing to build the capacity of the organization. And I'm pleasant, I was pleasantly surprised to hear that they would like to come forward to talk to council and not ask for money. So, that's, I think, a really good news story because I suspect a lot often people come forward, they're looking for something, but they just, they want to share where they're at and build a strong communication with the town and with council. So, they'll, you can expect a request for delegation coming down the pike. The other thing I wanted to highlight was, we had a, I think, by all accounts, a successful bioindustrial roundtable last week. I've been gathering some preliminary feedback and it's been unanimous that it was a highly-valued opportunity. So, I'll just kind of walk through a little bit about what that day looked like and, but first, I want to thank your worship and council members for coming and participating and showing their support for the bioindustrial sector. So, we had 41 participants in total. Twenty-three of them were from the private sector and I think this is an important point because often economic developers, we pull together other government people, right? And there's some value in that, but the real cream of the crop is when you get the private sector in the room because they're the ones that are going to create jobs, they're the ones that are going to invest in their businesses. So, we had 23 private sector representatives there. We had representation from every level of government, we had nonprofits there and we, the focus was really around building connections between the people in the room. So, it wasn't, here is something that we have a value and everybody sit and listen. It's really about come and participate and that is what the roundtable model, at least from my perspective, is really about. It's about being able to bring people together before you know what the value you're going to offer them, okay? So, before we knew who was going to come, we said, well, come to a roundtable and then as people start to come forward, we start to see, oh, there's a lot of people interested in BioChar. We should, you know, include a piece of that BioChar in the agenda. Oh, wow, there's, you know, some real heavy hitters in the hemp manufacturing industry. Let's, let's have them speak. So, you get to build the agenda that is custom to the group of people that are coming out. And so, that's what we did. We had a roundtable of introductions, then we had Dan Midlon from Biocomposites Group talk about hemp and he electrified the whole room. After that, everyone was just in the zone about the opportunities in hemp manufacturing and both on both sides of the supply chain. And then, we had Chris Olson from IRSI share 30 minutes on BioChar, also, you know, really good presentation and spoke to some of the opportunities that are emerging. We had a lot of people on BioChar in the room. Then, we had a study report from the, on the biomass feedstock study that has been done in the region and it was good to have an expert kind of walk through the group, with the group, what the study shows and it's a good news story. I mean, it's something we already appreciate that there's a lot of biomass in the area, but it gives a lot of detail and it's going to take some time to even digest, digest that. But then, we got into some discussion around supply chains and we had breakout sessions and some of the, the discussion at the table was very sophisticated. You know, some of the tables were coming up, came up with a full business plan for a entrepreneur, a real entrepreneur. So, this isn't like, oh, you know, this is an exercise of, you know, this is an entrepreneur sitting at the table who now has a business plan, you know, and has the people who they need to work with to make that business plan happen. So, and then, we finished the day, everyone had a chance to kind of share, you know, where their head was at. But some of the things that participants have identified as coming out of this is, one is, there'll be research projects utilizing BioChar blends for food production as a result of this discussion. Entrepreneurs engaged funding opportunities, right? So, thanked us for being able to introduce them to potential funders for their projects. There's an innovative garden center project that I already touched on that, you know, the group was able to help develop a whole business, a business case around. There was a venture capital in the room who has followed up saying that they're interested in investing in some of the business opportunities that were discussed by entrepreneurs in that room. And my friend Morley from the province of Alberta, he's the manager of biomaterials, so this is really his wheelhouse. And what he has said is that the town of Drayton Valley needs to take stock of its accomplishments and really celebrate your success and how far you've come and that Drayton Valley is virtually ahead of every community in Alberta for its readiness and identifying opportunities and mobilizing resources to capitalize on those business opportunities. So, you know, this is someone who, whose job it is to travel the province and work with communities, work with business to land investment and so, I think that he doesn't share that without, you know, meaning it full 100%. So, so I think that this council and the town leadership really deserves kudos for your leadership in this space and for demonstrating leadership in Alberta in both bioindustrial but also economic development generally.
Hi. Thank you for that report. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Burton? Council Bossert.
I would like to comment on the bioindustrial roundtable. Aside of, from the good fortune of sitting at the right table that day, I was so excited to hear the excitement in that room, the buzz in our community concerning biocomposites, bioindustry and to see other provincial leaders at that table, other regional leaders at the roundtable and to hear what you're saying now, that Drayton Valley really has positioned herself very well to look forward, to move forward in the biocomposites area, bioindustry area. I was captivated the whole time and this is not my wheelhouse. I think you did an exceptional job and we had some exceptional people at that roundtable, so thank you for organizing it, putting it together. I'm very much looking forward to seeing some of the outcomes of the discussions that were had that day.
I, Council Bossert had shared through CTC as well, a little debrief of the event and she shared her enthusiasm and as well did Mr. DeGol and Claude of that day, so it sounded like it was resounding success, so we look forward to further results from that day.
Great. And I should mention that the CTC did an amazing job. I was, I think there's a superb job of working behind the scenes to make sure, the scenes to make sure that the event went well. I was really impressed and, you know, I had, I had a lot of fun and I look forward to the next opportunity to have a session at the CTC. We do have a roundtable coming up, or a tourism roundtable coming up on December 1st. It's not going to be at the same scale, right, because of the, the investment being made in bioindustrial sector for many years has led to, you know, a lot of capacity that we could capitalize on the tourism. We're at a different place. We're, we're at ground zero and building up that momentum, but we're working to try to bring together many different entrepreneurs and people in the tourism space and we're going to make social efforts to engage the cultural community so that they can come out and we can begin exploring how we start to build that sector up.
Okay. Council Frederiksen.
I'm wondering, in these roundtables, are we engaging in any sort of evaluation forms or anything like that at the end of the sessions or being able to collect comments from individuals that we're able to kind of develop a bit of a benchmark and see how things move as we move forward?
Yeah, so there's two layers to that. First is, I've sent an email asking everybody for their first impressions and that was, I asked for one or two sentences so that I could provide this report, but also encouraging anyone to identify any outcomes to watch for. So, we have that information. So, that is kind of a gut check on, you know, did everyone see their value in the day? And I think it is clear that there was value in the day. The real question is, what is the real value? What is the lasting value? And we won't really know that for some time yet, but my intention is to double back and do a bit more rigorous evaluation with, with the group, once they've had time, to see if anything actually came out of this. Like, so, you know, a research project utilizing BioChar blends for food production, that sounds great, does that happen? If that research, if that happens, now we know, we were told to watch for that by a BioChar entrepreneur. If that happens, we can, we can chalk it up as one of our wins because that came about as a result of this roundtable. So, we also have some macro-level performance metrics that are built into the performance framework of the strategy, which this is all integral part of, so we're going to be tracking that. But in early stages, we were looking for numbers of people who participate, which is good to get a sense of whether there's an appetite in it, but not good to get an understanding of, was this of value, like of lasting value? And so, we'll find that out and I'll report back on the actual, like, deep outcomes as they come forward.
Thanks very much. Anything further? Sorry I had to duck out there for a minute. You barely noticed my absence, I'm sure. Anything further? No? Thanks. Emergency Services. Camille.
Morning, members, council.
Morning.
So, in regards to the October stats, the fire services responded to a total of 23 calls in October. Out of those 23 calls, 14 calls were within the Drayton Valley. Reminder, nine calls were for Brazo County. Within those 23 calls, responded to two structural fires, responded to six incidences involving motor vehicle collisions. Three of those were two vehicles. One was a single-vehicle rollover, one was a vehicle involving wildlife, and one was a vehicle involving a concrete pillar. In regards to the rescue call, responded to one rescue call involving a patient being pinned underneath a loader. We received four alarm calls, three of those were residential, one was for museum. For the assistant agency, other agency, we responded to five of those calls. Three of those calls was assisting EMS with patient care. One was assisting RCMP with an overdose, assisting EMS with a young infant. For miscellaneous calls, responded to five. One was a carbon monoxide, one was an ammonia leak that was a false alarm, a structure fire that was a false alarm, a power line down and an odor complaint. In addition to our calls, October was one of our most busier months when it comes down to education, so I'd like to just go through some of the stuff that we've done in the past years as well as this year for our fire prevention as well. You are all aware that we run for a full month. As well, you are all aware that, that we run for a full month, uh, and sometimes a little bit past that. So, again, this year is no exception. We did, uh, a lot of work with the help of all our members, uh, within the department. We had the grade four to six fire chief for the evening contest, which is a wonderful hit with the kids. So they come out, they spend the night with us, and they do a full range of activities, including a eleven-thirty midnight call-out that they have to get on the trucks and actually go out and be a little firefighter. So they had a wonderful time, and we have lots of fun with them as well. We did, uh, once again, grade five kitchen safety, uh, which is a really big hit with, with the kids, a big eye-opener, uh, with talking in regards to, uh, uh, safety in the With the grade eights, uh, we did a fire extinguisher program, so, uh, they were able to actually use fire extinguishers and, uh, how to properly use them and how to, uh, try to put out, uh, small fires if it's safe to do so. Uh, we, this year, we incorporated, uh, our dispatching service, uh, out of Parkland County. They actually came out and did a home, uh, or a smoke detector program with the kids as well as, uh, learning their addressing and how to call nine-one-one. So it was a really good interactive engagement with them. And something else new for us, because we're bringing outside partners to help us to facilitate some of this training. Uh, as well, we did the smoke delivery, or sorry, the pizza delivery smoke detector program once again. It's a big hit and, uh, right now, uh, we're finding, uh, people are calling, uh, Boston Pizza to special request that this is what they want. They just don't want a regular delivery, they want the fire truck delivery. So, which is great. And once again, Boston Pizza stepped up, uh, to help us, uh, with running that program. We also did the Mary Poppins chimney sweep, uh, where we encourage residents to have their chimney sweep inspected. We, we worked with, uh, Lidduke Chimney Sweep, uh, and a big hit this year, both for residents in the town and in the county. And they were here for two and a half, almost three days, uh, doing out, uh, inspections and, and services. And we've seen a bigger decrease in, uh, chimney fires over the years since we've introduced this program. Uh, in regards to the students, uh, that we've, uh, been, uh, going with these tours, it's not just the Drayton schools that we go to, but the program's also extended within the Breton schools as well. Uh, one of the last items that we, uh, did was the hockey, uh, turn, or, uh, thunder, excuse me, sorry, uh, the Drayton, uh, the thunder. So we went out to engage the public once again on another venue, uh, just to be able to showcase, uh, what we do and educate the public, uh, and it was a really good turnout as, as well. Uh, in regards to our three open houses, we had, as I mentioned in previous, uh, information, uh, our open house, Station Three, was very well attended, as well as the two other open houses in Breton and in Lodge Pole were very well received by each of those communities. Any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Good morning. Um, I'm just wondering a little bit about, nothing specifically you spoke on, but the county's been doing a lot of work with, uh, Radon in the home, and I'm just wondering if you guys have had any kind of time with that. I know there's testing and stuff you can do, and I know you guys deal with a lot of other types of alarms and situations in the home. I'm just wondering if that's come up at all?
Uh, no, the, the county hasn't, to my knowledge, uh, came to, to us to assist them with that program, but if there's something that we can work together with them to help educate the community, we're definitely, uh, will be going to look at that.
Thank you.
Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much of a voice today. I really, again, want to commend the fire department for your active engagement of youth in your education programs throughout the month of October and throughout the year, really. Uh, you're catching these young people at grade four, grade five, grade eight, where they're very keen to learn, very eager to learn about what the role of, uh, a fire, uh, fireman or fireperson would be. And I, I just think you're, you're targeting a great audience there, planning the seat for healthy, safe lives moving forward. So thank you so much for your work with young people in the community. Secondly, I wanted to ask about CO2 detectors. We've heard some very tragic stories on the news lately of families that have lost their lives because of CO2, uh, being present in their homes now that furnaces are having to be employed through the colder weather. Um, what can you say to our community about CO2 detectors?
Uh, we encourage every home to have a CO2 detector within the, uh, within the, within the home, especially, uh, close to the sleeping quarters. Uh, the province has also done a wide variety of education, uh, programs and pamphlets and handouts on the benefits and where they should be installed and maintained. Uh, so through the, uh, through our open houses, we give out information packages, we give, uh, information to anybody, as well as, uh, anybody that comes in throughout the year asking, uh, for that, uh, we'll encourage that as well. Uh, also, within the building code and the fire code, some changes have been made to accommodate the requirements of, uh, carbon monoxide detectors. Uh, so new construction homes are required by the code to have, uh, a carbon monoxide installed during construction.
Anything further? All right. Thanks very much. Well, what's this, uh, five point four, was that going to be dealt with now? This, um...
Okay. So I have one more, one more item to, to add. Thank you. Uh, as council may, may or may not be aware, eighty percent of firefighters in Alberta are all volunteers. Definitely, the fire service has been run by volunteers for many, many years. Ninety-seven percent of all fire departments are run, uh, by volunteers, uh, that equates to, uh, over four-hundred-and-fifty stations that are being, uh, operated, uh, by the, by the volunteers. Uh, we couldn't run the department without volunteers, but we can't run without volunteers because of, or, uh, without the employers being in support. So what I'd like, uh, I'm here today in, in front of you to say thank you. Thank you to council, thank you to town for allowing, uh, members, uh, that are working for you to be able to be an active member on the department. Not only do we have a couple full-time members out here, uh, that are doing that, but it's more about the volunteers. So, uh, today, uh, with me, I have Fire Lieutenant Dennis Pooen and firefighter Mitch. Uh, they are one of the volunteers and they work for the town, uh, in the capacity. Uh, we've gone through many of the employers throughout town to thank them. Sometimes we take a long time to recognize, uh, and, uh, why I'm here today is to present you with a plaque. So I have a plaque for employer partnership, Drayton Valley Brazu County Fire Services, Station Three, recognizes the town of Drayton Valley for their commitment to the fire services through understanding and flexibility to help keep our community a safe place. Uh, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could have, you have come down to the floor and, uh, I can present the award.
Just before we do that, I want to say thank you for the recognition and thank you for your service to our community. Employers, private sector employers, of course, in the community, uh, are key supports in, in the activities and the livelihood of a volunteer fire service. Um, it couldn't be done without them, of course. Uh, and municipality, of course, is blessed with, uh, some committed individuals who both work for us in other capacities and serve in our fire service, so thank all of you. And we'd be happy to take a photo. Well, that was welcome. Tyler, talk that. What do you got for us?
Uh, yeah, uh, well, thank you so much, uh, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to say a big thank you to yourself, the mayor, and all the councils that were able to be part of the, uh, light-up parade, uh, last Friday. It was, it was a lot, it was a lot of fun and, uh, I know that, uh, I definitely got a good workout by, and I found out how far we went. We went six-point-nine kilometers. It was, it was, it was great and, uh, there was a lot of thumbs up from the, uh, from the glow sticks and from the candy. So if there's any, if anybody needs any candy after, I have a bunch, uh, left over if you do need some. My report.
Yeah.
We should get to that, I suppose. Uh, the participatory budget, uh, report is, is completed and will be forthcoming, uh, very, very soon. Uh, the interim budget messaging information, which is what we will be working on, uh, until the interim budget is released, that is what our department is working on. Also, the strategic communications and marketing plan for two thousand and seventeen is also going to be forthcoming. And, uh, next week, I'll be, uh, sitting down with some of the community groups in Drayton Valley to go through our events calendar so that they can know and be better educated about how to add events to our website. So, yeah, that's about important.
All right. Questions, comments? Counselor Frederickson?
I'm wondering, I'm not expecting you to have this information now, but, um, when we do have another report, would you be able to give us just some information on, uh, traffic numbers to our new website, um, or the, for the year or whatever? Give us a benchmark or since it's been launched, as well as perhaps, um, some of the numbers on our social media, the, the reach numbers that we have, increases in likes that we've seen?
Absolutely, yeah. Facebook and all social media platforms have been really, really good about, uh, providing us with more, more insights as to, uh, how much traffic we do have, uh, on that. And I, I can definitely, definitely do that for twenty sixteen and the next year, so many, if that, if that works.
Yeah.
Anything further? Didn't see that coming.
What about the app?
What about the app? I can, we also do have traffic numbers for that as well.
Oh.
Oh. We're over a thousand. I can tell you that, we have a new layout, so...
It's because it's a number. That's...
It is. It is, yes. Now I understand. I don't, I don't think I've heard this much laughing at council in a while, so it's, it's nice to hear that. It's nice to hear that.
Thanks very much.
Perfect, thank you.
What else we got? Um, Mr. Dibbin is away, and so we'll carry on. Council reports. Counselor Schiller?
I actually have no report this, uh, week.
Okay. Counselor Wheeler?
Um, we're out in the community lots these last couple of weeks with the Evening of Gratitude hosted by the Community Foundation was wonderful to see all the support for community groups happening. There's still lots of projects and events and things going on despite where everyone is at, so I think that's always a positive side. The bioindustrial roundtable was great, like everyone has said. The, uh, Christmas light-up parade was lots of fun, and the Health Foundation Gala was, was a, it was a good event, too. They had a strong turnout and they, uh, had a lot of participation from the people that were there, which was nice to see. So they're getting close to their CCT scanner coming in December. I also had a Healthy Communities Coalition meeting, and they work kind of on doing updates at in-between meetings of the subcommittees, so they're working on a community dinners subcommittee, which is going to be hopefully planning monthly community dinners partnering with, um, communities and businesses. So whether looking at groups doing some of the cooking or whether it's, uh, businesses sponsoring, there'll be different partnerships set up, but really getting out there to connect the community is the whole goal of it, so... And then they also talked about their, um, alcohol policy group, which will be coming and presenting to council hopefully on December fourteenth, wrapping up that. And then the, uh, community garden group has been moving ahead and, um, they meet this week, so no urgent updates. And same with the Traffic Safety Injury Prevention Committee, they're looking at, uh, what they can be doing in the community to connect with local, with local groups on how to promote prevention, so... And the discussion we had was on domestic violence, which I know the town's participated in a lot of that recently, but it was interesting because they had a panel and that included, um, someone from the hospital and a police officer and also the, uh, one of the councilors in town, so people who see the effects of domestic violence in different ways or different parts of the cycle. And it was interesting hearing how they connect in the partnerships. They, they all right now work pretty individually and know about each other, but they don't connect, and so that's what they're really focusing on, and they're all very excited and keen to do that. So I see a lot of progress being made in this area, and I, I know the town's on board with that, and I know they've been working with our safety coordinator, and I think it's going to be good, so... There are lots of events coming up between Santa's Workshop, there is the Fine Arts Show on the thirtieth, there's, the high school has their fine arts show on December seventh, Shaken and Drayton, there's EPAC concerts, it's, I love December, so, yeah. So I just hope everyone gets out and enjoys the Christmas festivities.
Thanks very much. We could bottle some of that enthusiasm, that'd be, that'd be awesome. Counselor Bossert?
I would really appreciate my portion of that bottled energy, I really would. Uh, I, I'd like to again, um, comment on the Evening of Gratitude November third. Uh, despite the economic climate of our community, the Drayton Valley Community Foundation continues to be a strong organization that gives back to many groups and organizations in our community. And, uh, although I'd like to congratulate all the recipients who received, um, sponsorship or donations from the foundation this year, which was a very tidy sum, I'd like to also congratulate the community, uh, Drayton Valley Community Foundation for their ongoing commitment to sustainable, uh, activity in the community. Uh, they're just a really, uh, passionate group of people that pour into so many different activities and groups in our community, so thank you to them for all their hard work. Uh, November seventh, I had homelessness and poverty reduction strategy meeting, Ms. Resin already touched on our ARDN application. Uh, I wanted to mention November eleventh, which was, which of course was Remembrance Day. Uh, on a personal capacity, I work with newcomers in our community, uh, many of them who were, uh, have never attended such, uh, ceremony in the past, and, uh, many of my students were able to attend, and feedback in my class yesterday was that it was an amazing ceremony, and I think that the Legion should be congratulated on the hard work they put into that event every year and, uh, honoring, uh, our, uh, men and women in service in our community and in our nation, and for the community themselves that came out in such strong force to recognize that day. So thank you very much to the Legion for their work on Remembrance Day. On November seventeenth, as mentioned, I attended the, the bioindustry, bi-indus- bioindustrial roundtable at the CETC. It was an excellent opportunity for me to gain, uh, deep understanding of that industry and how it is, uh, unfolding in our region and how well-positioned we are in our region to take advantage of the rich resources we have right beside us. And, um, as, uh, Ms. Eric mentioned, I, uh, there will be some, uh, unfolding of events as a result of that roundtable, uh, outcomes that were, seeds that were planted, uh, during discussions at that roundtable, and I'm very excited to see how that unfolds in the months and, and perhaps even the years moving forward. Uh, well done to, uh, to all that attended. Uh, on the eighteenth, as an alternate, I attended the CETC, uh, meeting, and on the twenty-second, I attended, uh, Waste Management Meeting, which I'm sure our chair, Ms. Counsel Frederickson, will, uh, comment on. Um, had the opportunity to, uh, spend some time down at the newly-named Discovery Park, uh, to check presentation for, uh, equipment, uh, with... presentation for equipment with the mayor. And I invite the community to take a look at that new park, spend some time in it getting to know what activities are there. There's a wonderful new skating rink that the ice will be set as soon as the weather cooperates, but there's more than, more than just the ice. There's so much more there and I encourage people to enjoy it through the, even through the winter months. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Fredrickson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. Last Thursday, I attended the Social Sustainability Course offered at Augustana University through their rural sustainability programs. And I enjoy going to these courses because it does get you really thinking about what is our community doing well and what are areas for improvement. It also is a good opportunity to talk to other municipalities that we wouldn't normally see, because a lot of the ones that attend Camrose are coming from the southeast part of the province. So to see, to talk with them about some of the struggles that they have, things that we have, there are a lot of similarities. And to get some insight on to how they've tackled some of those problems and what we have, it's a great opportunity. One of the things at that course that they had, that the instructor handed out was a, it was a twenty-three questions or twenty-three elements of resiliency, signs of community resiliency. And going through that, some of the indicators go back to access to education, access to housing, volunteer base, ability or opportunities for communities to come together and, as a community, and build those connections. And so looking through that twenty, the twenty-three indicators, there are definitely areas in which, you know, were some red flag areas for a community, but on the whole, for a community our size, we are, I'm continually surprised when you are comparing it to other municipalities, what we accomplish and what we do. And a lot of that is, definitely can be attributed to our volunteer base and our community, the community values that we have at the table. So I will be coming forward with a report on that, but it was, it's always an interesting session. Also last Friday, so this isn't in the capacity of a counselor, but I can see opportunities for linkages. I attended the Alberta Seniors and Housing Communities Advocacy Association and as a board director. And so ASHA is the advocacy body that Brazu Seniors Foundation is a member of. Just in my short period of time of being involved with them, it is, they are a very well-organized advocacy organization. And just seeing the inner workings of how they strategically get in front of MLAs, MPs, how they get on the agendas of provincial and federal initiatives is an excellent learning opportunity. And being able to take that back to some of the, or some of the committees that I'm on, specifically one that came to mind was the Aquatic Facility Committee of, once this net zero study comes out, what steps are we going to be taking to bring that forward to the right people, whether that's federally or provincially or to private industry? So that has been, and also getting a better understanding of the housing situation across Alberta is interesting. Yes, we had a Waste Management Committee meeting yesterday. We do have a scheduled briefing on our GMP agenda, but it was an excellent committee meeting. A couple of our focuses of discussion, one is we are reviewing our waste bylaw to get it in line with some of our sustainability measures. We had sent out an RFP for our waste collections and very happy to announce that we had gotten three bids that came back, all within what dollar figures that we are currently looking at. So, so that, that was really good. I mean, my biggest worry, or our biggest worry, was sending out this RFP and it coming back with, with one, right? So we're looking at that. We were discussing also our spring cleanup and how, what different ways can we still engage public in that kind of, in that service that they enjoy, but how to do it from a sustainability position, a position of sustainability. So it's an active committee, a lot of policy and a lot of directions coming forward that we will be discussing with council in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Natto.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to yesterday's budget meeting and our regular GMPs, I attended on November tenth Economic Development Committee meeting. We did talk about several different topics, but one of the first orders of the day was nominating the new chair, which is Counselor Long, so I will let him talk about that. We also attended later that evening, Counselor Long and I had a very long day apparently. It was the legacy meeting. There you go. Was the legacy meeting where we just got the update that they are three-quarters of the way done with the Western Review scanning and digitization. So that's proceeding well underway and we're really pleased with the progress in that. On November eleventh, I was honored to participate with the Remembrance Day ceremonies in direction from the mayor. It was nice to tell my family history in terms of that and I was honored to do that that day. It's always a special day in our family. On November eighteenth, I was nominated as Chair for the CETC Committee. So we started that discussion. We discussed upcoming budget, as I think is topic of mind of all our committees currently, upcoming focus and presentations and the upcoming Indigenous Awareness Training that we're looking at bringing in as a municipality and some talk about making that a regional opportunity with other municipalities that are in, in the same position of just wanting to, to have gained further knowledge. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Long.
Thank you. I will try to be brief here. I also attended the Community Foundation Evening of Gratitude on November third. I've been involved with that group a couple times in the last three years and it's nice to see the work that they do proceeding so well. I think it was a record amount of granting this year, close to a hundred thousand dollars, so congratulations to them. Yellowhead Regional Library on November seventh, we approved the budget for the coming year. I won't bore you with the details, but the towns, the requisition that comes to us, four dollars and thirty cents, remains the same level as it has been since two thousand and ten. So something for which I take no credit whatsoever, but it's nice to hold the line there. Our own library board on November eighth, Lyndere Cowper Smith is once again back as Chair. I believe she's been on that board for ten years, so I salute her efforts. Economic Development, as Nicole has mentioned, on the tenth. We discussed a couple of things, primarily the two upcoming workshops, one of which has now happened, the Bio-Industrial one and the Tourism one comes up November second. The Bio-Industrial was, as others have mentioned, I think extremely successful. And the other thing that we were looking at was the possibility of reopening a Regional Economic Development Alliance. That is actually part of my AUMA report, which we're discussing in ten minutes in the bank, so I will leave it there. Remembrance Day, Nicole's speech was both moving and short, two things I greatly appreciated. It was a good day in the community and nice to get out there. I attended the breakfast with the guys, also with the Legion, on the seventeenth before going to the Bio-Industrial Roundtable. And the Health Services Gala a couple nights ago with Counselor Wheeler and my own dear wife, we had a very nice time. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. I, I forget the date, but I was really delighted to attend the check presentation ceremony from Greg Distributors for the outdoor fitness equipment at, what? I don't remember the date, but, but it was a good day. The weather was good. I tried out all the equipment. We walked around the park and, and it is extraordinary. And that was a, an excellent demonstration of confidence and support from the staff of Greg Distributors. This was not a corporate donation. This was a staff donation of ten thousand dollars towards that, that space. So thanks very much to them. November eighth, I was delighted to speak on all matters government at HW. Pick up to a couple of grade nine classes at the same time, because it was also American Election Day, we got to talk about that, too. And I think, going to leave that right there. Later that afternoon, we opened Forty-third Avenue, which is an important transportation link for, for the entire east side of town, but particularly Aspen View and Morale Estates. On the tenth, I was honored to, to attend and participate in the Holy Trinity Academy Remembrance Day Service, which of course they hold every year. On the eleventh, I attended a Remembrance Day Services and I was extremely proud of Counselor Natto in, in her representation of the town and in her speech, which was, in my estimation, the best Remembrance Day speech I've ever heard the mayor of Drayton Valley or his, or her substitute give. So, thank you. On the seventeenth, I, I was pleased to speak at the breakfast with the guys, well, breakfast event hosted by Pembina Crisis Connection Society. It's, it's an event we've had two years running now and I hope it continues. It's, it's held in many communities throughout Alberta and on an annual basis at about this time. And it casts a light on family violence. And as one who grew up in a household which was no stranger to family violence, it's near and dear to my heart. On the seventeenth as well, as Eric went into in some detail, the Bio-Industrial Roundtable, I was delighted to go and open that and see the, the many different faces in attendance there. So it was, it was good representation. The eighteenth, of course, we had the CETC Committee meeting where Counselor Natto graciously took over as Chair of that committee. And the Christmas Lightup Parade, which was a delight. I usually sit in a car and wave to people during these things. And this was, this was way more engaging for me and just a much more positive event. And six point nine kilometers? And I think I ran half of that because I kept going back and forth and running out of glow sticks. And apologies to the one young tyke that I beaned in the middle of the forehead. Yeah, so. But I'm hoping she'll survive. And that is my report. Yes? Counselor Fredrickson? He did not have a report, so.
So we...
Yeah. Yeah, it was concise. The information items. Nine point one, the RCMP stats for October. Nine point two, the Waste Management Committee notes for March, June, and September. Nine point three, the Economic Development Committee notes for October. Counselor Long's conference report for AUMA. Counselor Natto's conference report for AUMA. Counselor Fredrickson's conference report for Travel Alberta Industry Conference. Kudos to all of you for being conscientious about those reports. Nine point seven, the Legacy Project notes. Nine point eight, the Pembina Area Physician Recruitment Committee notes for January through October. And the AGM notes, library board minutes for May. Universal Child's Day Proclamation. Counselor Long's conference report for the Yellowhead Regional Library Conference. And nine point twelve, the Certificate of Appreciation from Wood Buffalo County is included in the package. I don't know whether anybody's seen it. It was addressed to me, but it is not for me. It's for the community and in particular, you know, the, the decision was not mine to assist the people of Fort McMurray in their evacuation fallout. The decision was council's. And once that decision was taken, it was administrations to implement and they did so exceptionally well. So administration and those who are not in the room at present, thank you so much for the work that you all did in, in making that as, as seamless a process as possible and for making residents of Fort McMurray home in our community. And nine point one three, Drayton Valley Brazu County Fire Services October stats. So with that, I will take a motion to receive those items as information. Counselor Fredrickson, all in favor? That is carried. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Long, all in favor? Oh, sorry. My head was turned that way. We're adjourned.